Six, please. Okay. All right, for those in the audience.
I'd like to request five.
Five. And I would like to request eight. For those in the audience, the following items have been placed on the consent calendar for action to be taken on all items in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent calendar by any planning commissioner, as you've just heard, any staff member or audience member for separate consideration. The findings of this planning commissioner recommendations to the Pennington County Board of Commissioners who will make the final decisions. Cassie, do you have any items to pull?
No.
Okay, could you read three, four, and seven into the record, please?
Absolutely. Item number three is conditional use permit CU 0845 for Elaine Anderson. Stephanie Anderson is the agent. To review a single wide mobile home to be used as a temporary residence while constructing a single-family residence in a low-density residential district, the recommendation is to continue the review of conditional use permit 0845 to the October 12, 2015 Planning Commission meeting. Item number four is conditional use permit 1514 for Daryl and Mary Harkin to allow a single-wide mobile home to be used as a permanent single-family residence in a general agriculture district. Staff recommends approval of conditional use permit 1514 with eight conditions. Item number seven is construction permit 1511 for Pennington County Highway Department to improve and realign 2,500 feet of Cheney Road, which is located about 25 miles north of Wall, and the recommendation is to approve construction permit 1511 with 10 conditions.
Thank you, Cassie. Is there, are there any members of the audience or the public who would be interested in pulling any of those items for further discussion?
No.
Okay. Anybody else have anything? We got everything that needs to be pulled? Madam Chair, would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar with items five, six, and eight removed for discussion.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar with five, six, and eight removed for discussion. Any further discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Onto item five.
All right, Cassie Bolstead, Assistant Planning Director. Item five is conditional use permit 1515 to allow for caretaker's residence on the subject property in a suburban residential district. The applicant is Gerald Meredith. This existing land use is currently residential. The applicant has requested conditional use permit to allow caretaker's residence. They currently reside on the subject property in a double-wide manufactured home. There is also currently a single-wide manufactured home on the property where the resident's sister is living. He would like to replace this single-wide mobile home. These homes both right now are in illegal, non-conforming status as they've been there for many, many years. But with him replacing the single-wide mobile home, that is what is creating this conditional use permit request. His sister does need care on a day-to-day basis. We do have a doctor's note on file in the planning department stating that she does need assistance and need care.
Madam Chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
I guess I'll get to the point that I have, just more of a clarification, since I'm the one that requested to pull it. I guess, I'm just was wondering if there's any regulations on that. I always thought the primary residence would be the person needing care, and the caregiver's residence would be the secondary house. In this case, it's flipped. Is there any regulations that?
Um, not that I'm aware of. He resides in this house right here, the double-wide home, which he deems his primary residence since he's the one who lives there, and then that would be the caretaker's residence, and she would be living here. So, I'm not aware of anything that requires there to be a primary and a caretaker's resident, I mean, she can, she can live in one and be taken care of, and then he can live in the other.
Okay. I just thought the primary landholder had to be the one that needed care to get the caregiver statuses.
Not that I'm aware of.
That's, anyway, I'm just looking for a clarification from that, so.
I don't know, Kinsley, do you have any? Yeah, he's living in this residence right here. His sister lives in this residence, and she requires day-to-day care.
I don't have any objections to it. I just, I guess I want to make sure that it's in conformance with the way it's supposed to go.
Sure. Do you understand, Kinsley, what his question is?
Kinsley, girl, with the state's attorney's office. Okay, so, he's not the landowner, though. She's the landowner, but...
He's the landowner, but he's not the one needing care. He's the one providing care.
Yeah, he's the one actually providing care. Yeah, it's odd how it's backwards like that, but...
If there's nothing that prevents it, I'll, I mean, I'd make the motion approved, but I guess I just wanted to...
Yeah. In terms of, hmm, because the idea would be that she would assumably be the one that needs the care, so she would be the landowner, and yeah, you would need that to...
To me, that's the same thing as like the ranch hand. It's the same thing. The ranch hand doesn't own the ranch, you know, he's there to provide for the owner's benefit.
I think we'd probably have to look through it in more detail to make sure that there is something that would prevent it, but let's...
Interesting question.
Maybe if you come back to it, I could look through this.
Okay.
Look through the zoning ordinance and make sure...
philosophically, I don't have any opposition to it, but I just didn't know, you know, if it's in conformance.
Yeah, no, it's a very interesting question, so let me read through it quick and see if, if there's something that would not allow this.
Madam Chair, would entertain a motion to table this for further discussion later in the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to table item number five for further discussion later in the meeting. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Onto item six.
Item six is conditional use permit 1516 to allow for a 16-by-24-foot guest house in a general agriculture district. Before I go into it, were there any specific questions on this one?
I have some, but I think Barb has. Barb pulled this item for discussion.
Yeah, on page three, under county environmental planner, it says integrity of the tank and to test to see if the drain field is operating properly. How do you do that?
It's my understanding, and Brittany could correct me, that they fill the tank with water and just ensure that the drain field is properly working.
Yeah, how do you do that?
TJ's question, or TJ's comments?
Yeah.
Because I've never before seen any reference to a drain field being tested. I don't know how you do that.
If I could, basically, one of the things you do is when you pump the tank, you see if there's backflow, because that means that the field is saturated and not draining properly. So, if after the tank's drained, you got water coming back in the tank, then your drain field's plugged.
So, everything, you're watching the tank?
Well, yeah, usually just within the tank.
Okay, well, that helps.
Yes, and when they haven't been used for a significant amount of time, we typically have them fill it with water, and then we come back at intervals, like every couple of days, to measure, to make sure that it's staying at an equilibrium like it's supposed to, or, you know, it's staying at its working...
So, this is a process? It takes a few days or a week?
Yes, it usually takes a couple, at least a week or so.
Okay, well, thank you. I don't have any other objections to this.
I have some questions about this one. Under analysis on page two, the guest house, the third empty bullet down, says the guest house ordinance specifies that the guest house should be hooked to the same onsite wastewater treatment system as the main house, and that's clearly not going to happen here. So, I'm wondering if that would require a variance from the ordinance? And also, on the next page, the first dark bullet, indented dark bullet, section 204-I-4, states that the minimum dimensions of any single-family residence shall be 20 by 20, and this clearly doesn't fit that either, so would that also require a variance?
Staff had not previously looked into that. However, there was a case about a month ago where, not the same situation, but something somewhat similar came up, where they were doing something that was contradictory to what the zoning ordinance said in terms of that, that one was a home occupation, and he did get a variance to the zoning requirements for a home occupation prior to getting any sort of other permit. So, staff could look into it and see if a variance would be required.
Boy, I think that makes sense. Before we go for, I mean, I don't have any objections to this, but since it goes, I mean, it's sort of like what Sig said about item number five, it just seems like we need to be very careful about following the ordinance.
Well, I'll make a motion that we continue this to the next meeting, which is when?
August 24th.
Okay.
Is there a second?
So, continue CU 15-16.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to continue conditional use permit CU 1516 to the next Planning Commission meeting. Is there further discussion?
Can I just ask a question to clarify? Just so I understand, the guest house is going to have its own septic, right?
Correct, yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Any further discussion?
Well, not so much specific to this, but I guess, I know we went through that discussion on the guest homes, but I don't remember the logic of why it has to be hooked to the same septic, because, I mean, in these bigger forested lots, you know, chances, you know, with relief, you aren't going to be able to get in the same one. I'm not sure. I'd like to be refreshed on why we did that.
We did that.
Madam Chair, if I remember right, when we were going through this, the reason was that we did not want someone, we wanted to put a limit on the ability of someone to add a guest house and say it was a guest house, but it really was another home. And so, that was part of several limitations in there.
Now you say that, I do recall that. Thank you.
Did we put a limitation on the distance between?
Yes.
Yes, we did.
Yes.
You know, a canic seat 50%, well, there's a size, canic seats 50% of the main dwelling. I thought there was, has to be 25 foot, but there was a distance, because I remember we had a, we had a case where it was close. It just said, shoving...
I don't see it in the ordinance, though.
And here's the thing about the utilities, they shall be, you know...
Shared.
Extended, no separate meters, unless the utility requires.
Yep, I think this one needs a little more work. Is there any further discussion? Okay, there's a motion on the floor to continue conditional use permit CU 1516 to the next Planning Commission meeting. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Onto number eight.
Good morning, Brittany Molliter, Water Protection Coordinator. Item eight is construction permit CP 1512 to strip topsoil and perform minor grading and leveling to be used as parking or storage area, and a stockpile recycled asphalt material to be used as a base for the parking lot. This property is located on South 79. Also, you guys have seen this parcel quite a few times. This is currently, I believe there's a rezone request to rezone a portion of this, that north portion, where this parking lot is going to be to general commercial.
Could you use your arrow pointer with the mouse? Because we can't, can't see the red thing on those.
Sorry. This area, right here, they want to rezone this portion right here to general commercial, and then there's where he wants to build the parking lot area. That's what he had submitted. It looks like he wants a 200-foot by 300-foot parking area. He does have some of the area leveled already, and he does have some of that asphalt sitting there currently. The only, the biggest concern that came up from myself and the drainage engineer was a parking lot of that size in that area. He had indicated he's going to use it to store hay, but with the general, with the rezone request, we weren't quite sure what was going on with it. And the other concern that we have was with drainage. Typically, when they have a parking lot of that size in an impervious area, we require some kind of detention or facility for drainage. So, was there any specific question?
Yeah, I'm the one who pulled this. I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
So, he's, is he going to recycle the asphalt in the way that asphalt is traditionally recycled, which is to put it in a hot-mix plant and melt it down and pave with it, or is he just going to grind it up?
He had indicated he's just going to lay it down and drive over it.
What, he's just going to, he's not even going to grind it up? It's, he's just going to...
According to the applicant, he had indicated he is not going to do that. He's just going to lay it out and...
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Because I thought in our previous discussions, if he wanted to do that, he was going to have to have a permit to grind, right?
Correct, he'd have to get a permit through the state, through the mine, through that.
That was in one of our previous meetings.
Okay.
And there was some question of whether he needed it or not, and we had made the decision that DE and R would make that determination because it is their permit requirements. So, based on whatever he does with that asphalt, he will have to find out from the state if the permits will be required.
It's a DE and R air quality thing, right?
Yes, through the mining.
Oh, to grind, to grind it up. Okay, so my next question is, is storage of hay something that would be allowed if this is rezoned?
No. No, if it was rezoned to general commercial, it would be, he had indicated to the director in a previous request that he wanted to store equipment that was on another parcel that he had on this parking area, once it was rezoned to general commercial. And actually, once it's rezoned to general commercial, he can't stockpile that asphalt there anymore either. So, stockpiling of asphalt, so there's some...
Killing of birds with one stone.
Yes, there's some kind of timing, and I did, and I did address that, because Cassie had that comment as the acting ordinance officer about the stockpiling, that it would have to be done, removed within 30 days of that rezone being approved, if it was approved.
Okay, and when does it come up for approval? Do you know when?
That rezone request for Mitch's, is it on the 24th?
The next rezone request of Mitch's, Jerry, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think is on any sort of agenda yet. I think it got continued until such time as he provides what has been asked of him in writing, and to my knowledge, he has not provided all of that information at this time.
So, Madam Chair, how long has that pile been there?
Well...
Long time?
It's been there a while.
Yeah.
It's been there most of this year, I think.
I think it's been there since PJ began working on his original request, if I remember correctly.
It just seems odd that we're going to put a parking lot out in the middle of a pasture.
And for storage of hay, I mean, I'm not a ranch girl, but it, I mean, I know that you don't put hay on an impervious surface, because it molds.
And the other part about this is the hay, I mean, he still has to have that drainage part of it. I mean, this is a big parking lot in the middle of a pasture.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Can I ask a question? Where in here does it say he's going to store hay?
He had just indicated that to us in conversation.
Okay.
Because he had, I think, and I did put it in there.
No, I didn't see it.
That right here, he'd been told he needed this construction permit. I did that in writing, because he didn't feel, in the beginning, that he needed a construction permit, because it was agriculturally related.
My biggest concern about this whole thing is Mr. Morris, I think, is getting really frustrated. He's trying to comply, and if we can find a way to allow this, I think we should, because he's trying to comply.
Sure, and I guess that's what, you know, we want to recommend approval of it, but there are some concerns with drainage and the size of it. If it was any normal request, we would require that. Our stormwater quality manual requires that. I mean, just the...
The stormwater stuff's going to be addressed in the DE and R, because he has, right? He has to comply with the DE and R general permit, right?
He does, and our stormwater manual. So, our stormwater manual would still require water quality capture volume calculations, and he would still have to show detention of anything that this impervious area would create.
That's covered in condition number seven.
Yes.
I was just curious about what he planned to store there, so...
There's a lot of the missile sites that were abandoned throughout western South Dakota are used to store hay, and they're covered with gravel. That's what a lot of the ranchers that...
Because they have fencing around them, and the deer can't get to them. That's why they use them.
You can go in there and get it without getting everywhere full of mud, that's a big thing.
All over the old missile silos are...
Okay, interesting.
Question I kind of have is, is this really impervious? I mean, he's going to have a hard time getting voids out, compacting it to a point of being restored asphalt surface, and, and I mean, even if it's, you know, typically with asphalt like that, you wouldn't just have big chunks like that that you just mash down. Typically, you would grind it first and then use it as a base. But even that's not totally, not really sand, but it's not impervious either.
But I guess that would be part of that requirement for the water quality capture volume. If it shows that there isn't going to be an issue, then it wouldn't, you know, he may not need a significant amount of detention or a small amount of detention.
Okay. Would somebody like to propose a motion on this one?
I recommend approval of construction permit 1512 with 14 conditions.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve this construction permit. Is there further discussion?
So, it will, if he does not get the DE and R permits and so on, he won't be able to do it, right?
Well, he would be in violation of...
Or something else.
Right, he would be in violation of ours and DE and R's, and I have talked to DE and R, and they are in agreement that he would need the stormwater permit from them, because it's 1.7 acres approximately.
And again, just so I understand, does he fall under the general permit requirements, or does he have to get an individual?
He would just fall under that general permit requirements.
And, you know, as far as him getting the permit, he just has to file notice of intent and then comply with the conditions. So, it's not a matter of he's not going to be denied the permit, it's a matter of whether or not he's going to be in compliance with the conditions of the general permit.
But him not following the permit conditions can, he doesn't meet our permit conditions, so it can be brought forward in front of you guys again.
So, that's where the enforcement comes in.
Yes.
Further discussion? Commissioner Troutman, you look like you have something else to say.
I just know that, you know, along 79, we've had that burned-out building for all those years, and we've had continuous issues with his properties, and, I mean, I think he should have a chance. I'm just not sure that it's going to be, well, it's lucky it's farther off 79, I guess.
It is, it's located right across the road from the...
Intertie.
The substation.
Yes, yes.
Okay, is there further discussion? There's a motion on the table to approve construction permit 1512. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item nine.
All right, item number nine is minor plat 1515. Let me get it pulled up here. Minor plat 1515 to create Lot 1 of Tipton Properties subdivision. I want to get rid of that thing. Okay, of Tipton Properties subdivision. Tipton Properties, Scott and Chuck Tipton, are the applicants. Heald Land Surveying is doing the surveying on this. The applicants are requesting to subdivide approximately 12 acres from apparent parcel of 224 acres to create Lot 1 of Tipton Properties subdivision. They are looking to sell this 12-acre property to a neighbor who owns the property adjacent to the, to the subject property. As it exists today, this property is 224 acres. It's this entire portion here. It's zoned as a planned unit development. It's in the Sunset Ranch subdivision, PUD. It's vacant of any structures right now. The proposed lot that they're subdividing is this lot right here that's outlined in blue. It's approximately 12 acres. It would still be zoned as a planned unit development. It would still be zoned as a planned unit development, and the subdivision of this proposed lot could increase density, because they do, as you can see up there, outlined in yellow, have future plans that they've expressed to further subdivide the property and create Lots 2 through 5. I don't know when they're planning to do that, but it has been something that they've indicated. A little bit on the planned unit development that's out there, it is currently under PUD 0810. This PUD has been amended a couple of times. Most recently, it was amended on November 10, 2008, and it was approved with 22 conditions. One of those conditions, condition number seven, requires that there be 80 acres of common area maintained throughout the entire PUD. And as you can see here, this PUD is, it covers this area, as well as this portion over here is in this PUD as well, so. But 80 acres is supposed to be maintained as a common area. Currently, there's approximately 60 acres of common area that's been platted with that PUD. The additional common area acreage was supposed to be within this 224-acre parcel that the Tiptons bought. It's my understanding that the additional acreage was supposed to be up in this top corner up here. The applicant does intend to rezone this portion, this top portion of this 224 acres, back to general agriculture, so it would be removed from the planned unit development, thus taking away that additional acreage that was supposed to be for common area. Staff did speak with Mr. Ryan Caskey. He is the one who developed the Sunset Ranch PUD and reviewed the conditions of approval of the PUD, specifically condition number seven. They did inform him that he will need to dedicate additional common area within the rest of the PUD, or do a PUD amendment to change the amount, the acreage amount that is dedicated to common area. He indicated that he will look into that, but he won't be able to apply until the middle of August. Also, a portion of this subject property is within the three-mile plating jurisdiction of the city of New Underwood. Staff did speak with New Underwood. They did take a vote in their city council to turn over all plating for this particular plat over to us, so we don't have any sort of conflict there. This was routed through the interdepartmental review process. Nothing of a concerning amount of significance came up, just a few corrections that need to be made to the plat prior to it being filed. The applicant does meet all the requirements for subdivision regulations, will not need to request any subdivision regulation variances. So, in conclusion, the applicant's request does appear to be in harmony with the surrounding land use. Staff is unaware of any plans by the applicant and/or buyer of proposed Lot 1 to remove proposed Lot 1 from the PUD. So, as we understand, that will still remain as part of the PUD. So, staff does recommend approval of minor plat 1515 with six conditions.
Thank you, Cassie. Are there any questions for staff, Sig?
I guess, in the report, I didn't see condition of the PUD number 14, that prior to any plat, I assume that means minor plat as well, that lighted warning devices at the railroad crossings, are those in place?
Staff was out there, has been out there a couple of times, to be completely honest. I do, I wasn't paying a lot of attention to the railroad crossings, so I'm not sure, but staff would verify that before the plat was filed.
And the other thing, if they're doing amendment to the PUD, I guess I would suggest under number two. I think the intent was that the common area may include, the way it's read it right now, the common area include, it's like a directive that's part of the... that's part of the condition that includes all those. And I don't think that was ever the case.
Detention? I'm guessing you're right. It's law will use this. Good catch. That is a good catch. Are there further questions for Cassie? Is the applicant here? Would you like to speak?
I guess I just-
Could you please just come up and introduce yourself for the record?
I'm Scott Tipton. Tipton, I am one of the owners of the, I own a lot in the subdivision. I just wanted to purchase some land. I do egg as well. We have cows and stuff like that. And I am just letting you, it was just, my lot comes within like 20 feet of the house next door. I was getting ready to start fencing in for putting cattle in the area or horses. And he just thought, well, jeez, that'd be nice if I owned that lawn and I don't have to have horses 20 feet from my house type of a, or 25 feet, whatever the minimum lot, you know, from the edge of the house. That is part of the house there in the corner. And our lot comes right up to it on the barn and stuff. And he actually has part of his driveway on our land and stuff like that. It's just kind of a friendly way between two neighbors to, he wanted to purchase part of the land. And we thought, well, jeez, if we go through the idea of breaking off this one lot, we might make four more lots along that gravel road. I mean, it's something, I'm not for sure if we even want to yet or anything like that. I just wanted to basically transfer this 12 acres to the neighbor next door. And that's kind of where we're, why we're doing everything that we're doing.
Okay. Are there any questions for Mr. Tipton? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, I do have another question. I know one of the requirements, I think, was something to do with the testing holes for a septic on the lot. Just my, just my personal question to you guys is, since Kasky owned all that and has a development for all that, does he have to do that per every lot? Or does he have to, you know what I'm saying? Because I don't think there's a, I can't think of what I'm, the words for, the testing holes for doing a septic.
Profile holes?
Perk test.
Perk test. Doing a perk test, I'm sure he did do a perk test for the 200 and some lots in the area. You know, is it a generalization? Does this fall under that? Or do you want us to continue on to try to do a perk test for it? I'm just, just a question that I ask as well.
Brittany?
Typically, that comes as part of the subdivision regulations. They can be waived, as you guys know. I know out there, they have been predominantly going to mound systems because there's a lot of shale out there. The only problem with doing it prior to on some of these lots is that if they don't put the house there, the septic. But I think people have been unaware of the shale in those areas and the need for a mound system. So that's probably something that's good to know when you're looking at purchasing a lot. So I don't know if it's something that you guys-
Well, I do know there's currently, there's roughly, I think, 80 houses out in that area. And I don't think there's a single one that has a land mound. Not that that can't be, or, you know, regulation-wise, but there is none that are built up. It's not like the ranch development on 79.
Yeah. There's actually quite a few that have gone in the past couple of years from failing systems.
Thank you.
Could you answer, do you know if there's railroad crossings, lighted rail?
There is railroad crossing. It's not even in this development, but coming from the 1416 to the north of this lot, about a mile, there's, that's where the railroad comes through. And there is no lighting crossing, crossing on that, that location. It's just, there's no, nothing like that. I don't know.
Maybe a good idea to just amend the P U D to kind of clean up some of those items.
Who would do, just, is that something that, who pays for that type of stuff? The lighting, is that the state?
Mr. Kasky would.
Yeah, the developer.
The developer of the P U D.
I am developing this one, this one lot, but I didn't know how that, you know, it's like, that's a big cost for what, it costs more than what I'm getting out of it.
That's what, and it says any, prior to any plat approval. So I mean, technically, unless the, this is amended first, those lighted crossings should be in place before any plating is allowed. I know, I mean, looking at the map, I saw the rail isn't through your property. I know that, but it's, that's why it may be just a good idea to clean up the P U D, make it more current with what's actually happening out there.
And there is some land, as far as you were asking about, I think it was number two. The common grounds, they're, we hay the one field. I mean, it's just, people want to go down, take their horses, walk their dog, whatever, and do whatever they want on the property. Everybody in the development's able to go out there, but there's nothing actual developed at all.
Well, and I don't, but just the way it's worded, it sounds like-
Yeah, I know. They've had a lot of neighbors go, well, there's supposed to be motorcycle tracks and horse arena and all these things that, prior to us moving out there and acquiring the land in this plat and across the street, or where I live. And I just, I just own one of the houses in the development, but.
My guess is the intent was to have the option to do any of those, but not-
You could do anything you want on it, yeah, whatever. They're just saying that anybody can go out there and it's, it's like a park, but, but there's nothing in the park. It's just a piece of land. But there are people that go out there and throw something for their dog, or, you know what I'm saying? Usually ride their horses more than anything.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this issue? So I guess I have a question, maybe for both of you. Brittany and Cassie, Sig has a really good point. If the, if the P U D, if not all the requirements of the P U D have been met, can we allow this plat?
There is a condition in here. Condition number one is that the, a major amendment to the P U D be filed prior to this being, this plat being filed with the register of deeds. So there is that condition in there that that major amendment does need to be filed and approved before this plat can be filed.
Okay. All right. Is there further discussion? Chair would entertain a motion?
I will make a motion, Madam Chairman, that minor plat PL 15-15 be approved.
I'll second.
With the six conditions?
With the six conditions, thank you.
Thank you. Is that okay with the secondary? Okay. It's been moved that we approve minor plat PL 1515 with six conditions. Further discussion? Bearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Do you like to go back to item number five?
We need to go back to item number five.
I believe Kinsey has some information. The situation would be allowed. There's little guidance on caretaker residences specifically in the zoning ordinance. So we had to look back at section 204, subsection F, that talks about conditional use. And because this basically wouldn't be contrary to the intent of the district in which this would be located, it would be okay that you have the landowner who has his residence, and then the person that actually needs the caretaking is in that secondary residence. That's, it's fine to have it that way, especially because it provides a similar situation in that if she doesn't need care at some point, that residence, she would have to move off the property, and that residence would also have to be removed. So it's, it's the same type of situation and wouldn't be contrary to other uses within the district.
Thank you. With that, I guess I would move approval of conditional use permit 1515 with seven conditions as listed by staff.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve conditional use permit 1515 with seven conditions. Is there further discussion?
I do have a question as I, based on what Kelsey said. So the only way we would know is if his sister no longer needed care at onsite. How would we know that? You would just review in two years to determine if it was still used? That would be all that we would, okay?
Correct. Yep. And there is a condition in there as well that each time it's reviewed, that an updated doctor's note be provided to verify that she does still require care.
Okay. I just wanted to verify that I was understanding that correctly.
Is there further discussion? All right. Conditional use permit CU 1515 is up for approval with seven conditions. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. On to item 10. Comprehensive plan discussion. Okay. At our last meeting, we had kind of a wandering, meandering discussion of the comprehensive plan update. And we're asked to go and read our existing comprehensive plan. Did everybody get a chance to do that, look through it? And what did you think?
Doesn't give you much guidance. It's descriptive, but that's about it.
It is. It's like a natural history.
Exactly how I felt. It's very descriptive, but there's no guidance. You know, it's like, some things should be considered, but it doesn't say what has to be considered.
We're going to do this.
Direction on hardly anything.
It's not much of a guideline. I think it, personally, that it would be a good place to start. Any other comments on the existing plan?
Well, and I don't know if you looked at the agenda for the planners' conference. I think someone should go and listen to what Minnehaha was doing.
Yep, I'm going.
Because they're doing a comprehensive plan update.
Right, yeah. Although it's late in the day.
Well, interestingly enough, I think Scott Anderson that wrote this document is the county planner.
In Minnehaha County?
Really? Seriously?
That would be interesting.
He's the county planner for Minnehaha County.
He is?
Yeah.
And he wrote-
He was at least a year ago.
Oh, because he was the director here?
Here. Moved across the state.
That'll keep it really interesting.
I asked Jerry to pass out to everybody this piece from, this is from the Rapid City Comprehensive Plan that was adopted, revised and adopted last year. And, you know, it's, it's so, I mean, I know it was extremely expensive for them to do that. But if you look at the way they did it, first of all, PJ sent out a link to the Rapid City Comprehensive Plan a couple of months ago. And I went back and looked through the whole document. It's, you know, you think it's, this one is big. I mean, it is voluminous. It's enormous document. But it starts out with a discussion of the general goals for the county. And I even have them, I typed them out separately. Their seven core values for the county are a balanced pattern of growth, a vibrant livable community, a safe, healthy, inclusive, and skilled community, efficient transportation and infrastructure systems, economic stability and growth, outstanding recreational and cultural opportunities, and responsive, accessible, and effective governance. And then what they did was they set goals under each of those principal, actually principles, under each of those core values, and then subdivided those further with goals. And then very specific points at which, you know, they aimed their, their future planning. For instance, in a balanced pattern of growth, which was core value number one, their first principle was encouraging a compact and efficient pattern of growth. And then they talked specifically about how to keep it compact, targeting infrastructure investments, how to annex, you know? What, what kind of criteria do you need to annex? Which is another, an issue of growth. So they were very deliberate in how they structured their plan. And then, after they talked about the seven core values and all of the general goals and principles that they were aiming at for the city, they went and specified specific neighborhoods. And that's what this document is, is from. This is, I think there were 16 neighborhoods identified in that plan. And you can see exactly how they did it. They set a goal, and then they sent policies to establish ways to get to that goal. And then they did a future land use plan. And when we look at, at what we have now, which is not specifically too useful, I mean, it's a great natural history of the county, really, is what it is. It doesn't specify anything about the differences between the parts of our county, which are, you know, enormous.
It describes them. It describes the differences, but it doesn't make any recommendations about how you should, how you should do land use planning.
Yeah, in the different districts. And, you know, this is a, I think this is a great approach. I'm not saying that we need to hire these people for a gazillion dollars to replicate that effort. But it's a great model, I think, to start looking at the different issues that we have across the county.
I mean, as a minimum, you could start looking at their core values and see if they're consistent with what we think. They, they might be consistent with what we think the county should be doing.
Exactly.
And there's, or, or they might need to be modified.
Yeah, exactly.
I mean, and especially since, you know, we end up having conflicts with the Rapid City. I mean, we should make sure that we agree with their philosophy.
Yeah, that we're in concert with them. Commissioner Troutman?
Madam Chair, you know, we, we did have folks on those committees and go to, we went to lots of meetings. But you're exactly right about several things. First of all, to address yours, Lori, when we went to those meetings of looking at these goals and focuses and so on, you know, really, the county was agreeing with that. So we kind of done that. The thing that I think is real important, though, is, is reaching out to the areas. And that was not done at all because, of course, they were focusing on Rapid City. There were comments made sometimes about, well, you know, it's kind of different as you go east or west or whatever, you know, about some of the things. But that's, that would be really important. And maybe it's somehow a good way to start for us to begin to look at how we would approach this comprehensive plan is preliminarily, we would, as a county, approach there. I mean, we've got townships, we've got smaller cities. Or just, yeah. So we've got some governmental entities that we might be able to develop a plan of approaching before we go and spend some money because it kind of gives you a great idea of what really is needed for all of the county, not just around Rapid City. And I hate to see us do that because, because really, the county is pretty heavily involved in that. And so, so we've kind of done Rapid City, but we should get this other information first and then see how it all works together.
I agree. I, I think honestly that we need a, I hate to say it, committee to, to make a recommendation from the planning commission to the county board for how to go forward with recommendations for a revision of the, and revisitation of our, of our comprehensive plan and how to, how to do it in concert with the city's plan.
I just think that updating and doing this is just going to be easier for the citizens that come in and they try to figure out what we're doing. I mean, I think you probably hear that. I certainly do. I just don't understand why I have to do all this, and I don't. Well, you don't really have a good reason if you don't have a good plan.
Exactly. I even thought, you know, Lori made a comment last time when we had our kind of wide-ranging discussion about comprehensive plans, that it's very difficult to get comments from citizens. But, you know, when I think about how many people have been before us from all over the county, we must have some kind of a database or a spreadsheet of contacts. And I bet if we asked them, the people who have had direct dealings with the county, I bet they would step right up and tell us what they think. And, and that might help, you know, at least provide seating for public meetings if we invited those people, or even if we surveyed them, you know, to ask them, what, what could we do better? How, you know, what in the regulations don't we need? So, you know, there are some, there are some ways forward. I think we could go, so. Yeah. Anybody interested on being on the committee?
I would help with the committee.
See, all right.
I would.
Barb? Yeah. Yes, we could do, I would like to be on the committee too.
I'd be on it.
Oh, okay.
No, can, probably-
You can't have that many.
Can't have four. Can't have four.
Well, that's right.
Has to be publican.
So, Madam Chair, just as a thought.
I'd be willing to be an alternate, then I guess, Jim, if you want to be on that, or.
Yeah, I'm, I have great trepidations about the planning process, so.
You don't want to have too many segments.
Yeah, we can't, we can't have more than three planning commissioners, then we'd have violation of the open meeting laws.
We can't have more than three people for a committee.
Well, not from the Planning Commission.
And Madam Chair, what I was going to suggest is, perhaps you could get some, I, I'm thinking Hill City especially, and Wall, so you could either end, and there may be, I don't know, I think I, I, you should have somebody from the ranch community and, and.
What about Lindell?
Yeah.
Someone like Lindell.
Yeah, you're right.
Lindell Cologne.
Yeah. So, so just as a thought, then that would round out. You wouldn't want a huge committee, but, but you do kind of need some outside, not just inside folks.
Well, I'm, what I'm thinking about is, is just getting a, some people from the Planning Commission together so that we can make a recommendation to you.
It'll carry a lot more weight, though, if you've had some public input.
Okay.
That's my feeling.
Fair enough.
One thing I would know, to me, just going through this, if, if nothing else, we don't do anything else, it should be at least updated, just even the facts and figures, I mean, like, you know, on the transportation.
It's so outdated.
The Hartland stops at Hermosa right now.
Right.
The Dondrail is still active, you know. You know, some of those just struck me as like, boy, this is dated.
Yeah, horribly dated. And there's, I ran across some spelling errors, things that just made me.
Oh, it's desperately in need of an editor. I wrote that down.
Like, seriously, you don't know when Mount Rushmore was completed? You put a question mark?
Question mark. Yeah. Okay. All right, well, we'll, we'll pull together our committee, and if anybody has recommendations for a representative from Wall, or a representative from Hill City.
Or the ranch community.
Or the ranch community, although we could ask Lindell, I think.
I'm sure he would, he would know.
He would give us somebody from his district, Commission District 1. Please let me know, and then I, when will PJ be back, Cassie?
Wednesday.
Wednesday. So, maybe next week, after he's got cleared all the whatevers on his desk now, maybe we can talk about who from staff would like to join this effort. Okay, anything more about the comprehensive plan? All right, moving on. County Board report.
The Board of Commissioners concurred with the Planning Commission's recommendations from the July 27, 2015 Planning Commission meeting. With the exception of minor plat PL 1516 for Chelsea, Chuck, and Donna Ferguson to create Lot 3 of Rushmore Cave Subdivision, the item was approved with eight conditions.
Items from the public? No, nothing? Items from staff, building permit report.
Yes, we did have the building permit report out for July. Couple things to note, our single-family residences are up over last year, as well as our accessory structures, which are under 328, other non-residential, and overall, we are up 9% permit-wise from last year, and 2% up over valuation from last year.
I'll tell you, the thing that stood out to me most was that we've permitted 24 hotels, hotels this year. That's astonishing.
I just, we approved, we actually permitted 24.
Building permits for 24.
And the valuation's up 2%?
Yes. Those 24 permits were permits for Hart Ranch of Park Model cabins that were already there.
Not, and that was sort of.
Yes, not giant hotels.
So, that was sort of a correction, right?
Yes, yes, yep, that was a correction.
Okay.
I do have one other item from staff, Madam Chair. I just want, and Jerry wanted to remind everyone, that the South Dakota Planners Association Conference is in Mitchell this year. It's on October 28th and 29th. For anybody who would like to go, Jerry, when would you like them to, let you know?
Well, if you could let me know by the end of August, that would be great. Yes.
And you said you're going, Karen?
I'm going, yeah. I think I told you that, didn't I? I think I got to be.
Yeah.
We'll go.
Okay.
Two so far.
Anything else?
Don't let you know, Jerry.
Okay. Can I ride with you?
Yes, you may.
Okay.
Items for membership? Anybody have anything?
I'll miss the September 14th meeting.
Okay, anything else? All right, Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Second.
Been moved and seconded to adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We are adjourned.